This has series has been talking about, you know, our calling to witness, how we witness, you know, the, the, the different involvement, how our lives are part of our witness, how everything rolls together for that. So it's been, it's, it's been great. Quite frankly, it's been challenging me. What I needed to do. Last week, we finished up with Paul, you know, trying to figure out how to teach people that worshiping a lot of other gods and how he applied that to his message and was able to transition that message. And finally, in the message, he basically said, you know, from your own poet, you know that we're God's offspring and that God's not made of gold, silver, or stone, or any image formed by man, but that we're made in God's image and therefore being that way, that God is more than that and we should worship him differently. And the God that made everything, including you and I and all the world, is to be worshipped in a different way and we're supposed to turn everything over to him. And so we use that to talk about how we challenge and look to other things that we do and how we ask the questions. Because we talk about witnessing and stuff, but a lot of times we don't learn like Paul, how to ask the questions correctly. Because if you ask somebody if they're Christian, they're just gonna say yes. So some of the times we need to look at other ways to ask the question. So we can really assert in that. One of the things that we used last week was two questions that come from evangelism explosion is if you died today, do you know you'd go to heaven? You know, to answer that. And then if you were, when you're in heaven, how would you respond when Jesus asks you, why should I let you into heaven? What would you tell God? Would you tell him it's on what you did? Or would you tell him it's on the grace? By the grace of God, I stand. So those are the things that give us a new perspective, a new looking at how we need to start asking questions about people around us. That we ought to start preparing and praying for those questions. It talked to people about spiritual things. What would you tell God? How, how do you, you wonder about God sometimes? All those kinds of things. How do we approach those people around us? How do we start praying? So that the right question is available, so that we're prepared whenever the opportunity is there, because the opportunity is going to be there. And start looking for particular people that we run into and praying that they'll be ready and they'll ask the right questions so that we can ask the right question back to them, to challenge them, to open their eyes to see God, to see how they stand with God and how they stand before God. So be purposeful, be ready. So that was a, a neat lesson to run in and, and say is, is okay, we gotta, it's, it's not one of these things. It's by accident as much as, is it takes a lot of prayer? And we've got to learn to pray more and more for those kinds of issues. To be ready for the opportunities and to be able to say the right things, to be able to do like Paul and to approach it in the right way in that point. Now, when we go into our lesson today, we're going to talk about how to trust God to work. Well, that's hard because we're pretty independent. It's a little bit built into us. We want to be in control. And and so we even do the things such as, have you ever seen those websites that say the hundred places to see before you die?
Yes.
What kinds of places are those generally?
Nice places.
Interesting. Like the Great Wall of China.
Great Wall of China, okay. So they could be cities. You know, Paris, Rome, you know, if you'll, if you'll look at list, you know, most of those show up.
Niagara Falls.
Niagara Falls. Slowly I turn, step by step.
Yep. That's the one.
The if you guys sit there and get this deer in the headlights look, that's an old Three Stooges thing. They were hypnotized and every time Niagara Falls was said, one of them would go crazy on the others. What's some places that you want to go to before you die?
Paris.
Paris, okay.
Yep.
Mine's sort of a weird one. I can't get any of my kids to want to go with me. I want to go to Antarctica.
Send us a card.
So Australia is, most of my kids want to, want to go there. Antarctica is the other one. Or sometimes it's places, things to do, like Grand Canyon, Park. You know, some of the people you see, people want to swim with dolphins. What's some things that are on your list?
Oh, I want to go back to Santa Fe to eat.
Santa Fe to eat. Good meal there.
Does anyone want to go with me?
I'll meet you there.
Okay.
Yellowstone. I haven't been there.
Okay, Yellowstone. Things like that, okay.
That's where Caitlin is right now.
That's one of the parks that I haven't gone to yet. So it's and Yosemite is a great one. If you've never been to one. Yosemite is pretty you know, really, really different, really awe inspiring. So, and there's quite a few places there to do. Maybe there ought to be other things on the list, actions, events, memories. Have you ever thought about things like that for your list?
Yes.
What?
Well, it's, it's really not a wish as much as a prayer that all of my grandchildren will know Jesus.
Yeah. So our kids, our grandkids. Maybe it's something about the church, you know, some desire for something at church. How about this? Have you ever? Have you ever thought about asking, saying is, okay, I'd love to share the gospel with somebody? And maybe you get to do that. The other one may be is you'd love to say, I'd love to see someone accept Christ while I'm praying with them. Maybe a mission trip that you'd like to go on? Some where you'd like to serve? Maybe even it's, I'd like to be in the center of God's will. You know, I want to think, I want you to think about that through our lesson today, because the issue is, is sometimes we think about places and things, but maybe we want to look at it from the standpoint of attitudes of our own heart and things that we, where we should be with God as, 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 as we do that. And opportunities for people that we could really share with them and prepare them and that. And so today's lesson, we're going to look at it a little differently than we normally do. We don't look at it from the opportunity of or from a different focus. So let's, let's look, where is it here? Okay. So the first verses three through eight, if somebody read that for us. Oh, sorry about that.
Then he told them, then he showed them many things in parables, saying, consider the sower, sower, as he showed some feet, see, some seed fell along the path. And the birds came and devoured him. Other seed fell on I'm sorry.
You need some help here. Some seed fell on rocky ground where it didn't have much soil and it grew up quickly since the soil wasn't deep. But when the sun came out, it was scorched and since it had no root, it was, it withered away. Other seeds fell on thorns and the thorns came up and choked it out. Among other seeds fell, still other seeds fell on good ground and produced fruit. Some a hundred, some sixty, some thirty times what was sowed.
Okay. Just sorry we got you all choked up there. Yeah.
I tell you, I, I miss John and Trudy. Really, I really can't read the scripture. It's what Tim does over here on the side.
Okay, that's what the kids used to say in class two, Marilyn. It was always the kid next to them. Yeah.
The, we use this scripture a lot. Sometimes it's misinterpreted. Sometimes it's, people look at it and there's a lot of different perspectives in this, quite frankly, and you'll see determines on different aspects. You see some talk from the perspective of the seed. Some of it talk from the perspective of the receivers of the seed, the ground itself, the sower, the differentiation of believers, even the good soil. So this parable is great from a lot of perspectives. So we're going to take a couple of them today, but we're going to really look at the sower. We're going to talk about the sower and us being in the role of sower. So who's the sower here? That's a trick question. So.
Doesn't say.
That's, that's, that's exactly right. It doesn't. It talks about in a couple of parables in the same chapter thirteen, they get on and talk about the wheat field. A couple of parables later and Jesus is the sower there. Jesus is involved regardless. Okay, of who the sower is. Jesus is involved because we know that Jesus, Jesus is the conduit to salvation. You know, through Jesus, all things happen. When we talked about the roles of God and the different aspects of God, you know, we know that through Jesus, everything that's happens. We because of this, all things occur through Jesus, the gospel is about. So, so through Jesus, someone is saved. You know, so the issue is he's involved, but we'll look at it here that we're in that role. Okay, that we are the sower. Okay? Why would we look at it that way? Why is that okay to use, put us in this role in this parable?
Because Jesus is trying to teach us some things about our witness.
Okay. Trying to teach us some things. And
Trying to teach us to follow through.
To follow through.
Throw the seed out there and walk away.
Okay. The, and, 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 and we're, we're all commanded to share. We've been talking about this for the last six weeks now. We're all commanded to share. We're all involved in that. We're commanded to reach who?
The lost.
The lost? Okay, we're, we're commanded to reach the lost and the lost are where? Where are the lost at?
Everywhere.
They're everywhere, through the whole world. In the Great Commission, he told us to go into all the world. Even those Gentiles. Okay. And Jesus had talked about that all through. So that was, that was no surprise, his feeling about the Gentiles on that. So now the sower is working here and he's using, anybody know what the broadcast method of sowing is?
I'm sorry, say that again.
The broadcast method of sowing. What'd you say, Kit?
Wide.
Yeah, you're just, you're just throwing seed out.
Yeah.
You're just throwing it out everywhere.
Can you see me doing that?
It, it, and that's, it's, many types of crops can be done that way. It's simpler, faster, and easier than putting things in rows. It works best for plants that don't require spacing. Or those that are easily thin later. Grasses and shallow rooted annuals are done that way a lot. I mean, generally when you when you do grass, you're going to spread it out that way. Right? Um, normal crops, it's okay, but not as desirable. Why?
You need to be able to get in there and get the weeds out.
Yes, they need order.
Yeah, you have to thin them out if you do that. So things like, you know, some things, beets, carrots, those you can do that with, but you, you, you end up having to thin them out. Okay? So it's easy to do, but it's sort of, so why do we broadcast sow here in the parable?
Because the gospel is for everyone.
Gospel is for everyone. You know, you don't know why the good soil is there. You don't know if, if the sower had made some good soil. You know, he had prepared some soil or not. But here Jesus is saying is, is the gospel spread to everybody. And it's very important, we're going to hit that a little bit more in a minute. The, the message is for everybody. All will not accept. But we're supposed to spread that message to everybody anyway. Why?
Because the acceptance isn't our job. The telling is our job.
Exactly. It's not our job. Do what?
We're told to.
We're told to. We're not supposed to worry about who accepts. That's up to God. We're supposed to just share. And, and also it may take somebody, people three, four, or five times to get it till they're ready. Till their soul is ready. Were you that way?
And it may never be ready.
May never be ready.
Our success does not depend on their final action. Our success is whether or not we have been obedient and shared the gospel.
Right? So I, I know, I, I know I heard the gospel many times before I accepted it. You know? Lot of people do. So the issue is, is we know that's going to be the case and so it needs to happen. So, so that's important lesson. So the first one is, is one is we're supposed to just not worry about who, the where, or whatever, we're supposed to share. We're supposed to be obedient. Okay? Everybody needs the gospel, so we're going to be obedient from that. The second is, we're going to cast them because God tells us not to evaluate the soil. Okay? Now, some people don't believe that. I'm going to get into that in just a second. But God tells us not to evaluate the soil. We're going to share the gospel assuming that all people can be saved. Okay, now, some people want to quote Matthew seven, six. It says, do not give what is holy to dogs and do not throw your pearls before swine, or they will trample them under the feet and turn and tear you to pieces. Jesus is using that parable to instruct his followers. It's not, he's taking, basically it's to not take spiritual things that were received from the Spirit and offer them to people who can't appreciate them. So we're going to avoid entering into unprofitable conversations with an unbeliever, you know, mock. Okay, that doesn't mean you don't share the gospel. Why is that? Because the gospel is not pearls referred to in the scripture. The gospel is the mission of the church. Paul carried the gospel by example to everybody. Okay, the Jews. Okay, he debated it with the Jews. Last week, we talked about him debating with the Stokes and Epicureans. Okay? Jesus shared also with somebody would have been identified as a swine. Who was, who did Jesus share with that would have been identified as a swine?
The Gentiles.
The Gentiles. Specifically, you remember one particular one that the disciples questioned him on? They left him for a while. He was tired.
Oh, the woman at the well?
Woman at the well. You know, that would have never, she would have never been offered the gospel. You know, had everybody been picking and choosing. The Jews would have never offered her the gospel had they had the gospel already. Okay? She was out of that. So the Samaritan woman at the well, it doesn't matter who would have been at the well, Jesus would have offered the gospel to them. Okay, that's very, very important because we tend to want to pick and choose. And you see a lot of people today wanting to pick and choose who and what can come to church and who and what can do whatever. The issue is, is, is all the gospel is available to all. Everybody is sinners. And, you know, we're there to do that. So the pearls that he's talking about in the scriptures a minute ago are different. Their wisdom, they're shared with believers so that believers can be encouraged, that grow, to be discipled. Nonbelievers will not understand that. And that's the pearls he's talking about. After salvation, there's certain things that you have to share with people that are saved. You're not going to be able to talk about, you know, growth with somebody who's never been saved in the first place. You're not going to be able to talk about prayer with somebody that's not saved in the first place, about how prayer is important to them. Okay? Um, so we're commanded to share with everyone, regardless of their ability to receive, so that the soil doesn't determine that. And they need to hear. Now, is this, this sharing, these sowers, are they just ministers sowing?
Yep.
Are they just the deacons sowing?
Yep.
Okay, so who's sowing?
All of us.
All of, all of Jesus's disciples. So any believer is a disciple, so any believer is sowing. So the issue is, is here is, is we'll look at this one as a saying, okay, we now have a job and we're to do sowing. And we're to do broadcast sowing. Okay, so broaden your minds a little bit as we start thinking about it from that perspective. Now, now, again, I told you, you don't know if he had made some of this, you know, I, I, I don't know when you're doing your own little backyard garden and stuff like that, you'll make your, you'll break up the soil a little bit in your areas. Of course, Michael does it big time, you know, he, he does acres out back. But, you know, when you're doing a little garden in your backyard, you know, and, 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 and you do that, you're going to break up some soil and you're going to throw seeds into that, you know? The ones that miss, you know, are going to miss. But the issue is, is he talks about different kinds of receptions here. He talks about the first being the path. What is, what is significant about the path?
It's hard.
It's hard.
Soil is hard.
Soil is hard. And so what happens to the, the seed that sits under that?
Gets trampled.
Okay, it goes bird seed. Yeah. Birds pick it up, take it off. And they're pretty good about that. Quite frankly, they're pretty good about getting seed anywhere. So, birds signify what here? What do the birds signify?
The distractions of the world.
Distractions of the world. Those things that take away the world word. They take away anything godly very quickly away, keeps us from the truth. Okay? The second tap, so, and we're going to hit these again, so they're a little redundant because we're going to re-hit them when we talk about his explanation. Rocky ground is significant because of what?
Okay, I'm sorry. What was the question?
Rocky ground is significant because of what?
Well, the, the seed can't find a place to put down roots.
Okay, can't put down roots. It's got a little bit of soil, just enough soil that will hold a little bit of water so that the seed will germinate, but not be able to get roots. Grew out of the soil and is exposed to the element and died. Okay? The thorns, the seed germinates and grows, but it's strangled. Strangled for light, strangled for water, even for soil and nutrients. The fourth one is the good soil. It's deep enough. There's no distractions, so the growth is not hindered. So how did you know, you, you could think about it. Some of it did go into good soil and it could have been something that's developed over time. The sower could have been developing that good soil. Okay? He could have, he could have been pulling away the rocks from it. He could have been digging the weeds away from the good soil. It's something that's happened over time. He's taken some extra time and he's got it there till the seed's been able to catch. Okay, get roots established. He's prepared it to be done. Resulted, the result of that seed was what? Result of the seed.
Then it grew and produced fruit.
Fruit, okay. All right, let's read the scripture.
Kit. All right, here then the parable of the sower. When anyone hears the word of the kingdom and does not understand it, the evil one comes and snatches away what he has been sown in his heart. What? Did I skip? This is what was sown along in the path. As for what was sown on rocky ground, this is the one who hears the word and immediately receives it with joy. Yet he has no root in himself, but endures for a while. And when the tribulation of persecution arises on account of the word, immediately he falls away. As for what was sown among thorns, this is the one who hears the word but cares of the world and the deceitfulness of the riches choke the word and it proves unfruitful.
Right? The, so Jesus is now explaining the parable to the disciples. He's got if we look at the sower's perspective, the sower is, is sowing the seeds. So we're sowing the seeds and they go on the path. They, the, the ones on the path don't understand the word. Okay? The devil comes along, provides another explanation for the word. Then you see this all.
I see it as on the path, it gets trampled too. There's just too much noise.
Too much noise, you know, it's,
Yeah.
It's, you know, they, they hear it. It's not anything that, that sinks in with them at all. Okay? They, it, it's, it's sort of like ADD. You know, I don't know if you remember the commercial ADD, you know, you just see the flashing vis, you know, pictures, just different pictures. That's sort of what it's like here is, is you have the picture of Jesus, then you have all these other pictures that keep flashing up. Yeah, he never has a chance. The person on the path never has a chance to really focus on Jesus. Okay? You know? We're providing those things. We're, we're getting, we get that glimpse in time that we can encourage somebody on something, but it doesn't catch. It's too hard and the devil takes it away real quickly, takes that thought away really quickly before it can ever you know, set in somebody's mind to think about very long. Okay? And steals it away. It's like a predatory bird, just coming and stealing the seed, snatched away from them. So these folks are hearing the word. They're not ready for it. Their mind is distracted. The devil snatches away, is taken by force, so to speak. And so what really happens is, is the word is rejected. Okay? I mean, if you really want to get down to it, is, 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 is the word is rejected because they had other things. Rocky ground is something a little bit different. You know, spreading the word, you're talking to people, somebody's received the word. Which means what? What, how did they receive the word, this person is on rocky ground?
They receive it joyfully.
They received it joyfully. It was, it was, it was a good story. They heard the story of Jesus. They thought it was great, got a little excited about it. They liked the ideals. They liked the morality of it. Okay? But the word never gets to the, to the point of acceptance. This is misrepresented a lot. You know, because some folks will teach that, you know, this person became a Christian and they just that, you know, this person became a Christian and they've just fallen away. Well, you, you can't lose your salvation. Okay? So that's obviously not true. And it's not what he's teaching here because he teaches several other parables that are very clear and do the same thing. So this is Jesus' parables about the kingdom, there's a bunch of them together that do the same thing. This is a person that has never got saved because they, they, they looked at Jesus, it sounded good, they got excited about it, they thought he was a role model, but they didn't have any root. Okay? They end up as nice people and quite frankly, a lot of those go to church. Okay, they're there, they think, they like the stories, they like hanging around with good people, and they're, they're there doing that. Okay, the thorns, the thorns are the ones that are toughest because the thorns represent somebody that has heard the word. They say they're Christians, but they don't want to commit. Okay? They're people that are real busy, they'll be busy about the Lord and all that kind of stuff, but they're distracted by a lot of other things. They're the ones that can't make Jesus Lord. Okay? They're the contenders, not the believers. They, they, they like being in church, they like doing the kinds of things, they like the Christian life. But they've got other things that they're chasing after that are more important, money, power, other things in life. Okay? Again, they're not, that they never became believers, they just became, you know, folks that like to hang around. And Jesus had a lot of those in his days, you know? Finally, when he said, you remember when Jesus said, you know, you'll have to eat of my flesh and drink of my blood to be able to partake with me? After that, people understood the seriousness of it and they didn't follow him anymore. They said, oh, this guy's really being serious about this. I, I was here for the miracles, I really liked the show, you know? I thought he was a great guy, I really liked the, I liked the parables, I liked the miracles, uh, but now he's expecting some kind of commitment from me? No, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna head back home. All right, the third reading, let's hit the third reading here.
As for what was sown on good soil, this is the one who hears the word and understands it. He indeed bears fruit and yields, in one case a hundredfold, in another sixty and in another thirty.
Right? All right, here's the test between pretenders and believers. There's several tests through the Bible. This is obviously one, but people want to debate the issue of fruit. I'm not going to deal with that today per se. A believer produces fruit, it's tangible, tangible results. Now, the issue here, the other lesson that they wanted us to learn today is, is we talked about it earlier, is we're only responsible to share the word. We're not responsible on how people respond and we're not responsible on what they produce. You know, we're not sitting here judging ourselves by whether our, the person that we shared with had a hundredfold of fruit versus twentyfold of fruit. So the first thing is, is let's talk about the things. He says, don't worry about the soil, we don't look for good soil, we share with anybody. Okay? We also make soil. This is something, as I was looking at today, I said, you know, our job is to make soil also. It really doesn't push that that much here, but, but that's part of it. Because if you really look at the sower, I'd say is the sower was probably instrumental in a little bit of the prepared soil. Okay? And so we're doing that and we're casting seed. We're doing that and we keep doing that. We're going to keep sharing until some of the rocks turn to soil, till we've broken down the hard rocks into soil. We're going to keep sharing until we pull some of the weeds up with some of these folks, so they're no longer distracted. Okay? That's the job of the church. The church has got seeds that are on rocky soil, they've got seeds that are on paths, they've got seeds that are in thorns and weeds, and the church is still having to minister to those people and keep spreading seed to them. Okay? We've got to do that because there's people in church that have not accepted Jesus as Lord yet. Okay? They're just there, they like it, they like hanging around with people that have the right ideals. We're there making soil so that we can help people get rooted and help that seed to stick. Okay? Uh, this was a little bit different. I've never seen this before when I read this scripture, but I said, this is, you know, we're not to get off, outside of God, looking at God, but in, in the details, but we're here working and preparing people, we're preparing their lives and we're sharing. And keep preparing, keep working away. So, and it may be one of those, have y'all seen this where a tree grows out through a rock? You know, it kept working and working at it and working at it, and the root finally did set and started breaking the rock and it just sort of split the rock out, you know, from among. And that may be what has to happen with some people that we're sharing with. Okay? We keep our eyes on Jesus. So first, the issue is, is we don't worry about the soil, we still, we, we don't test the soil because if we do, we may miss somebody that's ready to hear the gospel also. Okay? If we are just, if we're testing the soil and not sharing, we're missing our purpose and we may be missing somebody that needs it. Okay, the second is, is we don't worry about the results. Each person produces fruit, to what extent, it depends. It depends on God's gifts he's given them, depends on what God's called them to do, the path that God's called them to be. You know? Hopefully, we don't have to be on the same path Isaiah was. Remember what he was called? To preach to people and what did they, what did God say that was going to happen to his preaching?
No one's gonna listen.
No one's gonna listen. You want to sign up for that? You say, Lord, I really, I want to sign up for this other job. I want to be the one that's preaching and everybody comes and says how good I am and how exciting it is. I don't want the Isaiah mission. Okay? The, our relationship to them doesn't determine that. It, it, and it also goes to how we share. When we share, sometimes we want to get it just right in a thing. There's, there's, there's a book called Disciples Are Made Not Born. I've probably shared it with you before. There's a neat story in there talking about the guy sharing the four laws, the four laws is the little pamphlets, and y'all have shared those before. The, talks about how to grow with the Lord, how to, uh, have a relationship with the Lord, and the four spiritual laws we, we tend to call. So the guy that was, he was teaching, went out and he shared the four laws pamphlet, he got all of the scriptures wrong. He mentioned the wrong verses, he mentioned the wrong things, and he, and he applied them in the wrong way. And so the guy's looking at it like I failed, I don't know what to do. Let's get this over with so I can go back and start this guy at square one again, you know, get his act together so he learns this the right way. So the guy finally says, okay, get to the prayer, ask him if he wants to pray so that we can get out of here. Because I'm embarrassed because I did a bad job with you. Uh, and he's thinking this in his mind, but he didn't say it out loud. So he's saying that, when the guy said, would you like to receive Jesus as your Lord, and the, and the person accepted? And he said, how could he have accepted this? The guy didn't get the scriptures right. Uh, you know, all of a sudden, the guy said, his realization, the Lord has spoken to him, he says, you know, hey, the Holy Spirit doesn't need you to be perfect. The Holy Spirit doesn't need you to get things right. The Holy Spirit just needs an obedient heart. Okay? Because the Holy Spirit works through that and changes people's lives. You know, it's not how you look, whether your hair's done right, whether your words are exactly right, whether you've got the scriptures right or not, is which, it is the Holy Spirit working through you to change people's lives. Uh, I've shared with you before, it's been a long time, I think. Uh, I was doing a labor renewal weekend in Dalton, Georgia with a bunch of kids. Uh, we had a huge group of kids, we'd been praying with them all week, we'd been sharing testimonies with them all week. That Sunday morning, the, we, uh, asked people to come down to accept Jesus as Lord and Savior, and we had seventy that responded. Okay? They were responding so fast, we could not keep up with them. There are people in line to be prayed with. Okay? So I sat down with three at one time and I prayed with these three boys that I'd been working with all week, and they accepted Jesus as Lord and Savior. And I was pretty pumped. And then af, in the afternoon, we had a session on how they should grow and how they should continue to grow and all of that. So, uh, it's a shame, you know, we, 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 we have all of this, but that's all the time we get to talk to them about growth and stuff. So later, uh, one of the ladies in the group, or the, the, the girls that had been saved, was a real leader in the group. And she was sending us notes, and she sent me a note that the three had fallen away, were in trouble for drugs. So I was dejected, I was bummed out over the whole thing. And really, you know, acting, what did I do wrong? Kind of thing. So I was pretty bummed for a while, but a few months later, we had a labor renewal weekend in a different church. And two folks came from the church in Dalton, the lady I was talking about, uh, I'd say lady, and she was a senior in high school that year. And another guy from the church. And so in the opening session on Friday night, I was giving my testimony and did that. And afterwards, he came up to me, tears in his eyes, and he thanked me for my testimony, and he told me that it was my testimony that led him to accept Jesus as Savior and Lord. So God spoke to me then and there, and he said, you're responsible to be obedient and share. Don't worry about the good or the bad results, they're up to me. The Holy Spirit will work in each of them as I see fit. You were blessed today to see the fruit of your labor. Don't worry about that in the future, you just be obedient to me. And really sort of slapped me pretty hard. I, I just, one of the, one of the times where I just really felt God, you know, he didn't, went out loud, but just spoke to me right then. I mean, it was just a, uh, mind boggling thing, but because I never really remembered this kid. And so he opened up to show me that I was being used because I was being obedient, and let this be a lesson that I need to be satisfied with being obedient and not trying to worry about the results. So in summary today, we're called to sow seed, the gospel, the good news. There's no shortage of the seed. Okay? We can sow everywhere without having to worry about lost seed. We pray for everyone that they have the soil that can help them to grow, being obedient and content. We're to be obedient and content just to sow. We discussed the various receptors today. Each of us need to be faithful and obedient, share in obedience, but know that God is responsible. We're not to judge the type of soil, we're to realize that your seed don't pass, seeds in rock, seeds in thorns. These people are in church and we need to be helping change that soil so that they can receive the gospel. People we see every day, we need to be helping to change that soil so they can receive the gospel. Just whatever we do that we're going to sow seeds and then continue to change soil at the same time. God is responsible means he doesn't want us to worry about it. He wants us to just be obedient and share. Don't worry about sharing because even if you don't know the right words, as I gave you the example earlier, is God's faithful about using that, and the Holy Spirit can work through that faithfulness. Put on there, on our bucket list, the sharing of the gospel at work, at the market, at church. Pray that we have the opportunity to share with each person, pray that we have the opportunity to make soil better. Pray that we are faithful in sowing and that we can turn Madison, our church at Madison in our town, into revival through us sowing prolifically so that it spreads like wildfire as God intended. Hopefully you like this lesson. I, I thought it was a really neat lesson and very different with the scripture than normal. Any final thoughts and comments?
I can, I share a little funny story?
Yeah.
Um, when I was a young person, like in my twenties, John and I were US two missionaries in Colorado, and I, I took some girls to GA camp. And, um, one of them wanted to talk to me about accepting Christ, and so we sat down on the ground and went, you know, went through the whole plan and everything, and I said, do you understand? And she said, yes. And then I said, well, um, when you're ready, let me know. And she said, I'm ready now. So I was just going to get up and go on my way and wait for her to come back to me, and she wanted to do it right this minute. And it really, it really opened my eyes about what God can do with someone. And I certainly wasn't all that good at it at the time. But anyway, the girl was said, I'm ready for Jesus.
I had a similar experience, Robin. So I taught Sunday School, I was teaching on Noah's ark. And I, I always tried to bring in the gospel with every lesson, and and so I said, you know, we're like, you know, I, I compared it and shared about Jesus, and the little girl in the classroom, she says, she goes, I need that.
Yeah.
And she was saved and, um, it was just a, a really neat experience.
That's great.
Pray for more of those as we go. Let those be our bucket list, so to speak, of more of those kind of experiences. Anybody else have any final thoughts?
Uh, we had two praises I forgot to share. My Uncle Tom that y'all have prayed for last year turns ninety-one today, and that's a huge blessing. And we're up here in Franklin for our seven-year-old granddaughter's baptism today, so pray for her.
That's cool.
Y'all had a great week.
All right, let's close in prayer. All right, we thank you so much for today, for, uh, you taking this scripture and hopefully, uh, open our eyes a little bit differently. We pray to your Lord that, uh, we can see ourselves in the role of the sower everywhere we go. And dear Lord, that, uh, we'll be reaching in and picking up seed and sowing it everywhere we go. Not worrying about where it goes, not worrying about what happens with it, but dear Lord, just be faithful to you. We pray to your Lord that we can help prepare soil better as we go to, that we continue to work the soil, work the rocks, the thorns, and people that are around us, dear Lord, so that they might be more receptive to growing in you and allowing the word to stick. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right, next week, for those that came on late, we will be in, I will give you, you'll have the option, you can come to church, or I'll also be running it live so that you can see it, um, online if you want to stay in your pajamas and watch it that way. So you'll have both opportunities. We'll meet in our regular classroom. Uh, it'll be, it'll be a little later. I'll send out a notice on it, but it'll be at nine thirty. We'll probably get together just a little bit earlier, just if people just want to talk. I'll try to be there a little early to set it up and everything, so people just want to come in just to catch up. We haven't caught up in a long time.
Okay, so let me get this clear. If I choose to come to the church house for Sunday School, I can't wear my pajamas?
You can.
Okay, good.
It may not sit with you, but you can come in your pajamas.
We'll all understand.
Okay, cool.
Well, thank you, Buster.
Take care.
Bye.
Bye.